Steve Weaver to introduce this one.
Thank you Chairman, thank you Members. Yes, I think the data set out on page five of your agendas is probably the same as you received at your last meeting earlier this month. But just to recap, in terms of the planning services' performance in relation to speed, you'll see there, set against the government targets for 60% majors, 70% non-majors, we've got ongoing excellent performance across the board, with in excess of 95% of our majors being determined on time and over 98% of non-majors. Turning to the criteria on quality, which as you'll recall relates to how we perform in appeals as a proportion of all cases dealt with, as we have found in previous months, our performance is comfortably below the government threshold in respect of non-majors. And in respect of majors, you'll see there's a, as months have gone by since we've adopted the local plan, there's been an improving situation there which is clearly very encouraging. So hopefully Chairman, good news all round, thank you.
Thank you very much, that is for noting Members. Moving on. Item six, Application for Planning Permission, B1 WA 2018 0544, Site B, East Street Regeneration, East Street Farnham. Provision of a dual lane temporary construction access to the A31 comprising a bridge across the Riverway, pedestrian underpass, temporary vehicular access from South Street and other associated temporary works to enable the bridge construction. Other supporting infrastructure and reinstatement works include the erection of a permanent pedestrian footbridge across the Riverway. And this application has been brought before the Joint Planning Committee at the request of Elizabeth Sims, our Head of Planning. And with that, I'll ask Elizabeth Sims to introduce, followed by Ruth Dovey, the case officer.
Thank you very much Chairman, good evening Members. I would just like to briefly set out the context of this important application for the committee. As Members are aware, this is a proposal for a temporary construction access and bridge and associated structures to serve the building out of the main East Street Brightwell's planning permission. The main site permissions, WA 2012 912, as amended by WA 2016 0268, are extant. The principle of taking construction access from the A31 was established by condition on the original 2008 and then the 2012 Main East Street permissions. Importantly, the council firmly rejected an application seeking to remove this requirement in 2010, emphasising the point that construction traffic should come from the A31 and not through the town centre. In 2012, the council granted planning permission for a temporary construction access and bridge under 2012 911, and this has been implemented and is extant in perpetuity. Those Members of you that joined us for the site visit the other day, we refreshed our memories of where the implementation of the bridge had taken place and we looked at where the footings had been put in the trenches to support the footing for the bridge. The current scheme is a revision of the 2012 construction access scheme. The report sets out the differences between the two schemes. Importantly, Members are advised to take into account that the principle has been established and should not reasonably be revisited this evening. The previous scheme included agreement via details pursuant to condition for construction access for the bridge itself being taken from South Street. Now, the current scheme is importantly larger in terms of this being a double lane rather than a single lane bridge, but consequently it will have beneficial planning effects as a result of those changes, and Ruth and Dovey will explain those in more detail in a moment. The extant current permission remains a fallback position for the applicants, but the officers' understanding is that they would prefer to build the current proposal if permission is granted, having regard to the key benefits that would arise. I trust that's a helpful summary, Chairman, of the planning background. I'm now going to pass over to Ruth as case officer to take Members through the plans in more detail. Thank you very much Chairman.
Thank you. If I could just start by drawing Members' attention to the written update sheet. You'll see that both the Environment Agency and Environmental Health have updated their comments since they originally consulted, and they raised no objection to the proposal subject to conditions. The update sheet also clarifies an amendment to the report to confirm that the position of the pedestrian underpass and the storm tech cells within the bridge have been amended slightly between the single lane bridge permission and a two-way bridge proposal. There are also amendments set out to conditions 1, 5, 6, 7, 10, 14 and 18 for your consideration. And finally, I just have one verbal update, and it's been drawn to my attention that on condition four of the agenda, the penultimate paragraph reads the landscaping shall be maintained for the satisfaction of the local planning authority for a period of five years after planning, and that should read five years after planting. So this is the site location plan in aerial, you can see that the site is outlined in red, the area outlined in blue denotes land in the applicant's ownership and comprises the East Street redevelopment site.
Chairman, could I again ask for a front light to down to aid my fore eyesight?
So you can see that a majority of the application site is south of the river, but it increases into the northern part of the river where the bridge would hit on that side. And just so you get your bearings, the line of the Riverway is approximately here. The aerial provides you with a bit more context, again we've got the river flowing along here, this is Home Park House which is residential accommodation, this is Faulkner Court which is also residential accommodation, and we have the A31 running south of the site here. So if I take you through some photographs, photograph A is a picture of two lime trees that flank the access to Borelli Walk from South Street. Photo B is an image of Borelli Walk taken from just beyond those lime trees. The river, just for your bearings, the river is on, I can find my mouse, the left-hand side here. Photo C is taken south of the river from the point where the bridge would be located on the southern side, looking directly northwards, so it shows you where, the landscape where the bridge would hit on the northern side. And photo D is taken on the southern side of the river, sort of looking back in, towards the direction of South Street, and you might just be able to make out some fencing here, which is some fencing where some existing works have already been carried out in terms of the removal of 39 trees to enable the bridge to be constructed. So on this slide, photograph A is taken from the north of the river, looking to the north towards the main East Street redevelopment site. The bridge would hit at this point, and then the access road from the bridge would run basically down the centre of this photo, and you can see that is Brightwell Cottage on the right-hand side, so it would run to the left of Brightwell Cottage in the gap there. Photo B is an image taken from the northern side of the river, looking back towards the southern bank where the, where the bridge would launch from on the southern side, and this fencing here is, beyond that is the area where the trench has been dug that implements the 2012 permission. Photo C is taken from the northern side of the river, just in front of Home Park House that you saw on the aerial, and this is looking back towards where the bridge would be positioned, which would be in this location here. And photo D is taken from the southern side of the river, this is Borelli Walk just here, and this is a view of the gap in the trees that has been created adjacent to the A31 to make way for the bridge to be constructed. So again, this bird's eye view may provide you with a bit more context, and what I've done is tried to show some images and give an indication of what has already been approved and where. So on the right-hand side of the image, there's an image, this is an image of the single lane bridge that has been approved, and that would be positioned in approximately this location here. This is an image of the South Street access and site office that was approved under a discharge of condition on the 2012 permission, and so the access would run along here with the site office in approximately this location. So as has already touched upon, the single lane bridge has been, the permission's already been implemented, and is therefore extant, and it's a highly material consideration in the assessment of this planning application. So just moving into a bit more detail of the current proposal, this is a block plan of the proposed two-way bridge. As with the approved scheme, it would be accessed via the A31 over the Riverway and would provide direct access for construction vehicles to enter the East Street development site. The plans, as previously, provide for what is called a diverge taper, which is the widening of the carriageway leading up to the access point to provide a deceleration lane allowing vehicles to slow down and turn into the accessway from the main carriageway. So lorries would enter and exit the bridge only from the north side of the A31. The bridge would come in, it would be a galvanized steel structure, and it would be prefabricated in sections, so it would, it would all be constructed off-site and then moved on to site once the bridge is due to be constructed. And the bridge would be taken on to the northern side of the site and constructed from the northern side of the site. The bridge would be 12 metres wide, and it would also include the provision of a pedestrian access for construction workers, which is effectively this sort of line of white here, sorry it doesn't come across very clearly on that. And a result of the change in levels between the A31 and the bridge, it's proposed to build, build an embankment up leading to the bridge, and this is denoted by this shaded area here and here. The bridge would be in place for the duration of the construction of the East Street development, which is anticipated to be four and a half years. So this shows you the side elevation of the bridge. I mentioned that there was, an embankment was going to be created, so this side elevation shows you, this red dotted line is the existing ground level, so you can see how it would be built up in order to provide the appropriate level to provide the bridge. This square in the centre is a pedestrian underpass so that Borelli Walk can continue, can continue to be used whilst the bridge is in operation. The circle is a culvert because there is, there is a ditch that runs along the dip in the landscape that you can see there. The bridge itself would be solid on both sides and on the deck to, in order to ensure no light spillage from safety lights on the bridge into the river and its banks, and this was in the requirement of the EA on the single lane bridge permission. This image also shows a section through the bridge, so you can get an idea of what it would look like end on, and this image here gives you an idea of the gradient of the embankment that would need to be built up. So the proposal also includes the provision of a permanent pedestrian bridge, which would be put in place once the construction bridge is removed. It would occupy the same location as the construction bridge, although it would be a lot narrower at 3.1 metres in width. The footbridge would have a base of galvanized steel beams and struts, but it would be clad in stained timber slats with a timber deck finish so that it blends into the environment. Oh yeah, sorry, this, and what you can see from this image is that the land levels would be restored to as they are as existing, the only exception being this area here immediately in front of the bridge, where there would be just an increase in height to allow pedestrians up onto the bridge itself. So this slide shows the South Street temporary construction access and site office and welfare facility. So this is the access track running along here, and this blue rectangle denotes the site office. The construction access on this side of the river is needed to enable the construction of all the bridge elements that can occur on this side of the river. It's not possible to construct the bridge from one side of the river, and you need to start construction from both sides. Once the proprietary works have been completed, the bridge parts will be stored on the northern side and installed in, on the northern side of the river, not in anywhere on the southern side. As construction works will be on the south side of the river, the applicants also apply to provide welfare facilities for the workers and hence the need for the site office, but they will also, the main facilities will be on the northern side of the river. The proposal includes a couple of passing places for the construction lorries and a turning area adjacent to the site office. The temporary South Street access and site office would be in place for a maximum of 11 weeks, 40 weeks sorry, and this includes six weeks for its construction and 11 weeks for its deconstruction. The applicant has advised that an average of three construction vehicles per day would use Borelli Walk. This is an average, and frequency will rise and fall depending on the activities that are taking place that day. Some days there may be no construction lorries, and otherwise, other days it may rise to no more than five. And these figures are construction vehicles only as staff and operatives will be using riverside car park. At the site visit, concerns were raised regarding the height of vehicles and potential harm that could be caused to the lime trees at the entrance to Borelli Walk. The applicants have advised that a standard concrete lorry or a grab lorry, or a 70-tonne tough terrain mobile crane or a 360-degree excavator on a low load are all around 3.7 metres to 4 metres in height, so well above the clearance of 5 metres, which is the height to which the lime trees would be pruned to enable the South Street access. So I've just touched upon trees, and apologies, I don't think this comes out very well on the slide, but the trees that would be retained are in blue, green and grey, and those that are to be coppiced or removed are in red. So as I've just touched upon, the two mature lime trees either side of the South Street access would be pruned to a height of 5 metres to ensure there's sufficient space and no damage to branches. The trunks of these trees would also be boxed in for protection. The South Street access route has been designed to ensure as little impact on trees as possible. As a result of the location of the turning area and site office, one cedar and three, one cedar would have to be removed, and three hawthorns would be coppiced in there in this area here, and a number of other trees would require pruning. The whole access track would be made of temporary matting, which would sit on top of the existing surface in order to ensure no harm to the roots of any trees. It should also be noted that, which I've touched upon, that 39 trees have been, already been removed in this area here under the 2012 permission, and that no further tree removal in this location is required despite the increase in the width of the bridge. So this is a comparative drawing showing just a plan of the single lane, the approved single lane bridge in comparison to the two-lane bridge. The key difference in this plan is the width, the approved bridge in total is approximately 5 metres in wide with a carriageway width of 3.6 metres. The proposed bridge is 12 metres in width with a carriageway width of 7.4 metres, but there's, you also have to factor in the pedestrian walkway which is an additional 1 metre in width as well. As set out in the report, despite the increase in width of the bridge, the air and height of the embankment around it on the south side would remain the same, so by that I mean this area shaded in grey here. And that's a result of the increase in gradient. This is a comparative drawing showing the side elevation of the single lane bridge in comparison to the two-lane bridge. The bridges are approximately the same length, and they appear relatively similar, both being metal structures, albeit the proposed bridge is slightly taller. And what I should also highlight, which was touched upon in the update sheet, is the slight, so the repositioning of the pedestrian underpass between those two proposals. The design of the pedestrian bridge is the same as approved in 2012. What this diagram shows is that it's slight repositioned, so the position of the pedestrian bridge has been changed a number of times over the course of the history, so the one outlined, the black line is the current proposal, and the red line was the position of the pedestrian bridge in the 2012 permission. This is comparative drawings of the South Street access and site office, so you can see the trackway is in a very similar location between those two, and the position of the site office is similar as well. And then you can just see also that there are some additional passing places included in the proposed scheme. So turning to the assessment, if we consider matters of principle and technical opinion first, Surrey County Council has reviewed the proposals and advised they raise no objection to the proposed development subject to conditions. And if I turn to the bridge particularly, the construction bridge, this will result in highway benefits in comparison to the approved bridge, as it will reduce congestion on the A31 resulting from lorries having to wait to enter the site whilst lorries are exiting. Given that lorries would be able to enter and exit the site more quickly, it should mean quicker construction of the East Street development scheme, which would be a further benefit to the highway network. With regard to the South Street access, the applicant has confirmed that during work hours there will be a gatesman stationed at the site entrance who would form part, and this would form part of the construction management plan that would be submitted, secured by condition, and Surrey County Council has raised no objection to this element of the scheme. The proposed bridge, construction bridge would improve safety for construction workers through the provision of the pedestrian walkway, and the permanent pedestrian access bridge provides direct access from, from south of the way into what will be a area of Farnham Town, and it would therefore improve connectivity, sorry I've moved on to convenience and safety of footpath users. In terms of the impact on setting of the heritage asset, Brightwell House is located in the vicinity of the site, it's a Grade T listed building, and it would be retained as part of the East Street redevelopment scheme. Temporary harm has been identified to the setting of this building, but officers consider this would be outweighed by the public benefits associated with the, with the delivery of the East Street redevelopment scheme as a whole. With regard to impact on residential amenity, the nearest residence is Home Park House, and their location is approximately 33 metres away from the northern side of the proposed bridge. With regard to noise, vibration and lighting, there are considered to be no adverse impacts on surrounding residents. With regard to impact on trees, the council's arboretal cultural officer has raised no objection to the application, subject to a condition to ensure appropriate tree protection measures and the provision of an appropriate temporary track. With regard to air quality, the impact of the bridge would not have a materially greater impact on air quality than the approved single lane bridge, and is acceptable in its own right in any event. And in relation to contaminated land, there is no indication of contaminated land at the site, and the council's contaminated land officer raises no objection on this basis. Turning to flood risk, and I know this is a concern that's been raised by a number of councillors, various measures have been put in place in relation to flood risk, and these include the following measures. The underside of the bridge would be 300 millimetres above the 100-year flood level of 64 metres, the provision of a storm tech surface water management system to ensure continuity of the floodplain together with the pedestrian underpass and culvert ditch. And at the site visit, there was concern raised that the number of storm tech cells would be, to be provided, would be fewer than as proposed under the single lane bridge permission, but the applicant has advised that this isn't the case and that they've merely been rearranged. The proposal would also provide the provision of a box culvert which comprises the pedestrian underpass and the converting of the ditch that runs parallel to the A31. With regard to surface water drainage, the applicant has advised that a detailed design would be worked up to ensure that the rate of discharge from the access would not have detrimental impact on the surrounding area. This is captured in amended condition 14 on the update sheet. The Environment Agency have raised no objection with regard to flood risk and have required a condition to ensure that the development is carried out in accordance with the flood risk assessment submitted with the application, suggesting that they have full confidence in it. With regard to ecology and water quality, an ecology report was submitted with the application. A walkover was undertaken at the site in July and September 2017, during which no significant changes in habitat distribution or composition were recorded, other than the closing of some badger sets consented under the single lane bridge scheme. A further change is the removal of the 39 trees that I've already mentioned. It is concluded in the report that the proposed bridge would not result in any adverse impact significantly greater than the consented scheme. The report sets out a series of mitigation measures which is set out in your agenda report. Surrey Wildlife Trust raises no objection subject to a condition requiring the provision of a landscape and ecological management plan, and that's condition four of your agenda report. When originally consulted on this application, the Environment Agency raised no objection subject to conditions. However, officers spoke to the Environment Agency on Monday following council's concerns regarding the South Street access track. As a result, the Environment Agency has revised its response to say they have no objection subject to the provision of an additional requirement that further work is undertaken in relation to ecology of the riverbank, where the South Street access track would be located, and this is captured in an amendment to condition 14 on your update sheet. With regard to the effect on the SPAs, as the proposed development is for a bridge and associated works, it is not likely to result in a significant increase in the number of people permanently residing on the site, and therefore is not likely to have significant effect on the SPAs. And finally, we just have two matters of judgment to consider. The first is the impact of the proposed on countryside beyond the Greenbelt, the air of strategic visual importance and visually, and visual amenity. The single lane bridge was found to be acceptable with regard to visual amenity in these respects. The key test is whether the large structure would result in material visual harm to the point that the application should be refused. Officers acknowledge that the bridge is utilitarian in nature, as was the previous proposal, and as it is larger it would have a greater visual impact. However, the bridge would mainly be seen at an angle where the increased width would not be readily apparent. End on views where the increased width would be most apparent are only really possible within the construction site. In addition to this, the bridge is temporary in nature, and following its removal the land would be reinstated, tree planting carried out, and the pedestrian bridge provided. Therefore, it's not considered there would be any harm to the character of the area for the long term. Officers acknowledge that the South Street access and site office would be visually harmful, however this is required to enable the construction of the bridge. These details have already been agreed as part of the discharge of condition 15 of the single lane bridge permission, and the proposed details are not considered to be any more harmful. The site would be made good afterwards, and there would be no long-term visual impacts, and the pedestrian bridge is considered to be acceptable. With regard to impact on green infrastructure, parts of the development would encroach into green infrastructure as designated in the Farnham Neighbour Plan, both north and south of the Riverway, however this would be temporary in order to deliver the East Street redevelopment scheme. The provision of a pedestrian bridge would provide a link between green infrastructure areas north and south of the Riverway, and this is considered to be an overall enhancement. So in conclusion, the requirement for a temporary construction access in this location was stipulated in condition 37 of the original permission for the main development in 2008. The need for the bridge was further reinforced when an application to vary condition 37 to remove the requirement for construction access via the A31 was refused due to the harmful impact that routing traffic through the town would cause. Subsequently, planning applications in 2010 and 2012 saw the approval of a single lane bridge. The latter, the 2012 permission has been implemented, and this is a highly material consideration in the assessment of this planning application. As Elizabeth has already said, revisiting the principle of a bridge would therefore not be reasonable. The, the bridge would bring highways benefits over the single lane bridge, as I have outlined. Officers consider that in all respects the development is acceptable, and any effects can be controlled and mitigated through planning conditions if permission is granted. Officers have the view that there are no adverse impacts over and above the single lane bridge lane bridge permission that would outweigh the benefits of the proposed development in terms of easing congestion during the construction of the E Street redevelopment and improving the efficiency of the construction process and approval is therefore recommended.
Thank you very much, Ruth. Before we move on to questions and the debate, I'd ask the portfolio holder for Brightwell's to speak first.
Chairman, thank you. Good evening, Chairman and members. I've asked if I could speak on this matter as both a Farnham councillor and portfolio holder. So the Brightwell's E Street regeneration scheme is a key corporate priority for this council. And the application before you this evening relates to the access bridge, which for many years, for many in Farnham, has been a red line and it remains that today. Many residents want to see this scheme built and they want to see it built out, but they do not want to see congestion in Farnham Town Centre, hence the reason for the bridge. So the requirement for a temporary construction bridge is a longstanding one to safeguard both the town centre from congestion and resultant poor air quality. The single lane temporary construction bridge is already and has already been approved and partially implemented. So therefore, as has already been stated, that bridge could be constructed at any time. This current application seeks to widen the bridge to provide two lanes rather than one. The proposal includes details relating to works that are required in order to construct the bridge, including a temporary access from South Street, a vehicle track along the southern side of the River Way and a site office. Again, these are details that have been approved previously under the single lane bridge permission. There are no material changes in the height or length of the proposed bridge, only the width will increase. The key benefit of the two lane bridge is that following updated traffic data, it will provide sufficient capacity to accommodate peak demand for movements to and from the site, which means that vehicles would not back up onto the A31. The two lane bridge is pre-constructed, off-site, so again, it is quicker to assemble than the single lane bridge, which is bespoke and would have to be constructed on-site. There are no materially different environment impacts between the single and the dual lane bridges. Indeed, this bridge that is before you this evening for permission has less impact on the River Way, which is a key consideration. Previously, the most significant impact was considered to be the felling of the trees along the A31 to allow for access to be created. However, there's no change to this access and the majority of those trees have now been felled to allow for construction. As I have already stated, the principles have been approved and the application before you is the, only has one real change, which is the widening of the bridge itself. It has to be acknowledged that there are sensitivities that need to be considered, one of those being such the commemorative benches along that part of the River Way. And I have sought assurances from the developers that we will, we will work with them to ensure that those benches are safely and securely stored before being reinstated once this scheme has been built out. Therefore, Chairman and members, I would suggest respectfully that this evening, the question you have to ask yourself is, what are the benefits of a wider bridge which brings less environmental damage, a safer and smoother traffic flow from the A31 and significantly less air pollution to Farnham versus a narrow bridge which is likely to increase air pollution and congestion in Farnham? I would therefore urge members to support the application before them this evening. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councillor Potts. Now we move on to a period before the debate of any questions that members have and I would ask that they are questions and not statements, so. Councillor Lee.
Thank you, Chairman. The question concerns the site office. Bearing in mind that site offices comprise modular buildings, do we know if this is one module, two or four, where, you know, things are stacked on top of one another?
Can I ask Ruth?
My understanding that this is just a, this is just a single, there's, there's no stacking involved, it's essentially a single storey office, office facility effectively. It's not going to be double height or anything like that.
Councillor Ward.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm a little confused about the reinstatement and removal. I, I read about 40 weeks and then six weeks and 10 weeks. I wonder what happens to the bit in between, but the thing that I really want to know is, the track is going to run alongside the river for construction traffic to go in and do their bridge building. What is going to happen to the track in the interim time? Is the track going to be completely reinstated for the whole of the building period and then ploughed up again to allow the bridge to be taken apart? Or is that track going to stay there forever? Well, for the whole building site?
No, so the, so the figure of 40 weeks that you've been given for the track and the site office, so the first six weeks of that is for that all to be constructed, then the middle bit is the bridge being constructed. Once the bridge is constructed, there's, and I understand it does take longer to take it down and I don't know the exact details as to why, but then it will take 11 weeks to take all that down, so, and take it out of the site. So the site office and the track will be removed once the bridge is constructed and it won't be there for the duration of the E Street construction process.
Councillor Follows.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm just picking up on a question that Councillor MacLeod, the Ward sent round earlier. And I was looking at some of the planning history and I was wondering if you could comment. Apparently Surrey Highways recommended the joint use of, of one construction access for both of the two developments that are around there. Can you just comment as to why that was never enforced and as to why we didn't do that?
Mike. Chairman, I wasn't aware that, that Surrey had, had recommended that, that joint use. We are very much looking at, at, at this current access, which is, as the leader so clearly put, purely to provide a slightly wider bridge to allow two-way movements off the A31. In terms of, of a joint access to serve, presumably the member is referring to, to the Walmead development as well, that clearly would not be practicable to, to delay and, and, and perhaps impose restrictions on the E Street development, having to rely upon the programme for Walmead. They're two entirely separate developments, separated by E Street, and we would be very happy for the Walmead development to be served from the east, from Guildford or the Hale Road in via E Street that way. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman. We were encouraged to ask questions in advance. I wonder whether we're going to go through questions that members have submitted and asked or whether, I don't know whether we were wasting our time. Can we go through them, Chairman? Any questions? I separated mine into separate issues, there are some very important issues here. I mean, we do have to accept that we're both development partner and the LPA and we mustn't muddle up our roles here tonight. Legal challenge is likely if we don't act scrupulously to ensure that legal constraints are adhered to. And we really need to look at some of the things which have been brushed aside, I think, by, by the developer. We've just heard that this bridge has got less, a 12 metre wide bridge has got less impact than a, than a five metre wide bridge. We've been told that the applicant says that the Storm Tech cells have been rearranged and there's no less. I mean, this is fantasy land that I'm hearing. I don't want to go back to what we had a fortnight ago where we, you know, denial of maternity roost existence and that sort of thing. This is getting ridiculous, Chairman.
Can we have the question, please?
Well, can we go through them, please? I mean, I, I did send a list, I addressed, we did address a lot of these at the, or raise a lot of these at the site visit on Monday afternoon. And I mean, particularly, we've got problems with the calculations for flood compensation which are being used from 2010, they were the original Thomasson's calculations in 2010. The design has changed. In that respect, I think we should go back to the comparative drawings and members can see, as we did when we looked at them when we were at the site visit, that the amount of space being given for the Storm Tech cells is, is far less than it was before. The flow rate calculations are wrong, I took them with me, I printed them out and I can demonstrate it. The volume calculations are wrong and were exaggerated back in 2010 by Thomasson's own admission, it states it, I'm happy to show you and read it out.
Sorry, I must interrupt.
We've got a number of things that we need to look at, they're very important.
Councillor, could you ask the question, please?
Okay, you, you have a, you have a list, let's go through them then. Do you want me to read them all and then you're going to answer them all separately? I had assumed that perhaps some, particularly the ones which had already been raised on Monday, would be addressed without me having to raise them again.
I think the officers already addressed those in her presentation, but can I call on Mrs Sims?
Yes, Chairman, I just wanted to say, I did welcome members to submit their questions in advance and appreciated receiving those and also the additional questions that were asked on site. It was very helpful to us to understand the queries you had and we've done our best to address them in the update. And indeed, we have some further responses. And Councillor Hyman, thank you very much for sending your questions in. And Chairman, with your indulgence, we are happy to go through them as briefly as we can to answer off your queries, if that would suit you, Chairman, thank you.
Absolutely fine.
So I'm going to pass over to Louise to do that, if that helps, Councillor Hyman.
I've got a printed copy of the, Chairman would like a printed copy to have in front of him, if that would be helpful. I don't have a copy for everyone, but I have sent it out.
Thank you, Chairman. So the first question related to the, the limes at the front of the site, as was set out by Ruth in, in her presentation, the limes at the site frontage are not proposed to be removed, they are proposed to be pruned to a height of five metres by the Waverley Borough Council Parks Department. This would be sufficient to accommodate the height of the standard lorries that will be accessing the site from South Street. The next question related to access from, from South Street, which you pointed out in the design and access statement, had been discounted by the applicants because of constraints. So this option does appear to have been discounted by the applicant. However, the South Street access has been looked at and has been accepted previously by the County Highway Authority and this has already been approved. So this would just be a repeat of, of what has been approved. And it is noted that this access would only be used for the construction of the bridge itself and not for the entire development of the E Street scheme, which was discounted by the applicants. The third question related to non-technical summaries in relation to whether we consider the proposal met the law, rather than, as stated in the officer's report, as to whether the proposal would result in materially greater harm and be acceptable in its own right. In relation to EIA, the council have screened the proposal and we have concluded that the proposal is not EIA development. And this has included an assessment of the in combination effects, both with E Street, the E Street redevelopment scheme as a whole and with the other developments in the surrounding area such as the Walmead site, which is opposite the development. The next question related to the solid bridge, which you were questioning whether, well, you, you stated that sunlight would no longer be able to permeate through. The EA have, have looked at the application and have raised no objection. The approved bridge was solid in form and did not have slats across it. This was to prevent light spill to the ecological impacts below and so this proposal, whilst it is wider, it is still solid and so that would still prevent light spill into the river. The next question related to whether the bridge construction...
Excuse me, Chairman, could, could I ask that we address this in a different fashion? Because number one, the, the actual questions aren't being addressed here and there are a number of issues being raised in the responses, which I just feel like I'm getting the same, you know, same as a fortnight ago and I don't think it's acceptable. Can, can we go back and, and, and address the questions individually if, if we're going to do it like this, because otherwise it'll be like a...
I'm happy for the officers to continue in the way, when we come through debate, you can make your points at that time, but you're asking questions. The questions you asked on Monday and the site visit and today via email are being answered by the officers and I trust that that is satisfactory. So I'd ask Louise Leandal to continue.
Thank you, Chairman. The next, the next question was in relation to whether, I assume these are the construction company for the, for the bridge itself, whether they do a slatted prefabricated dual bridge? I don't know about that, but the Environment Agency wouldn't accept a slatted prefabricated dual bridge because they need to see a solid bridge to prevent the light spill below. The next question, will there be any periods during which the footpaths on both sides of the river will be closed at the same time and if so, for how long? Any footpath closures would need to be subject to separate stopping up orders and/or footpath diversions that would be subject to separate consultation as part of that process. The next question is in relation to air quality and the traffic impacts modelling. In relation to the transport impacts, further modelling would be required as part of the section 278 agreement on the main E Street scheme, so not on this particular scheme itself. Impacts on air quality have all been assessed as part of this application and as part of the environmental statement submitted with the 2012 scheme. The additional reports submitted with this scheme have been based on the 2015 pollution figures, which officers are satisfied can be relied upon as accurate. The next question is in relation to the eastbound closure on the A31 not coinciding with the E Street development. The, I'm, sorry, Councillor Hyman, I'm not entirely clear what, what you mean by this question, so I wonder whether you can clarify for me.
Yes, we're referring to the last question under air quality, aren't we? Which is that in, in response to, I state that in response to the Waverley Air Quality Office's 2012 request for in combination modelling. Crest stated that the east, and I quote, the eastbound closure on the A31 would not coincide with the completed or partially completed E Street development. So there's no need to assess the combined operational effect of E Street Farnham development with the bridge or diversions. Now, that's, that simply isn't true because if we were to look at the, for instance, the phasing plan, which is a variation of conditions application being put forward under NMA at the moment. This is, the E Street works to install the pedestrianisation of, of E Street and the reconfiguration of the Royal Dej Junction would be installed, I think it says in 2019 and the removal of the bridge would, removal works for the A31 access and South Street access would be in 2022. It would absolutely definitely be a period where we have lane closures on the bypass, where we have possibly at the same time also traffic exiting, egressing the, accessing the Burrellie Walk and at, at the same time as the Royal Dej Junction efforts. Now, you've said this has been modeled...
Please, can Louise Leandal answer your question now?
Well, the question is, will officers confirm that, that that response isn't true? That actually they will coincide and therefore there should be or must be in combination assessment?
Thank you, Councillor Hyman. To clarify, in 2012, the application was a... To clarify, in 2012, the application was accompanied by an environmental statement that assessed the in combination effects of this bridge development alongside the East Street development as a whole. And this particular application, to widen the bridge, would have no further impact on air quality over that 2012 permission. So we are satisfied that those in combination effects from, yeah, both the redevelopment scheme as a whole and this scheme have been considered together. Your next questions are in relation to traffic. So I am going to pass over to Mike Green, who is going to answer those for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, your first point relating to traffic was, do officers understand that restricted lane closures on the A31 bypass to off-peak will not prevent severe congestion? Very much so. We understand that they will help reduce the frequency of that severe congestion. But as the transport assessment has said, there is a reduced congestion on the network and on the bypass. And despite the good news that in fact flows have very much reduced on the bypass between the first TA that was produced and the December survey flows, the 2017 survey flows, despite that good news, there will still be congestion on the bypass, but not relating in a material way to these works. The important point is, is that in respect of the access from South Street, we are only looking at potentially the average of three vehicles a day and no more than five in any one day. So that is not going to impact upon the operation of the bypass. That was in fact your second question, how many HGV deliveries would be required in total? As I've just said, we are talking extremely low levels in order to build that construction accessing off the bypass at that moment in time. For those 40 weeks, we are talking an average of three a day. In respect of the original, the secondary transport assessment that was produced by ABY Letchford in March 2018 in support of this application, as I said, it could be seen there that the assessment is robust because traffic flows have reduced. And at the end of the day, as the leader so clearly explained, we are not here to reassess the acceptability or the workability of the principle of an access. We're here to assess the provision of an improved access that will only but better those fears that you have put out in your questions. Thank you.
Continue, please.
Thank you. The next section is in relation to environmental impact assessment. And your first question asks, do officers consider the application now satisfies EIA requirements and if not, why not? The application is a subsequent application for the purposes of the EIA regulations and it's therefore an EIA application. However, this element of the proposal as a whole, so this development that we're considering this evening, has been screened for EIA purposes and is not EIA development. As such, an environmental statement was not required with this application. The officer's report concludes the project has no significant effects. And you ask, isn't that for members to decide? And in the absence of any real in combination assessment in respect of flood compensation, traffic and air quality impacts, how can we assess it? It is for members to decide, but this is based on, but this can be based on officers' advice. And the officers' advice that has been provided to you in the agenda report is based on the expert opinion of our environmental health officers and our colleagues at Surrey County Council and the Environment Agency as well. And these experts have all concluded that the proposal is acceptable in relation to flood compensation, traffic and air quality. And that includes the in combination effects with the East Street development as a whole. The next question is in relation to the fact that the EIA updates from 2012, 2015 and 2016 are not among the application records and there is no non-technical summary for the whole project. So how can members assess the likely in combination impacts? The non-technical summary is a procedural requirement, which doesn't change the information that has already been considered to be acceptable as part of the 2012 application, which was EIA development and the environmental statement was submitted with that. This particular proposal, as I've previously explained, is not EIA development. And as such, a non-technical summary is not required to be submitted with this application. The next question related to updated reports that the council requested from the applicants. And we made those requests both in relation to this application itself that you're considering this evening and in relation to the applicant's request for a screening opinion as to whether EIA was required. And we requested this under Regulation 6.5 of the EIA regulations. And those particular regulations relate to screening requests. And it wasn't a request for further information under Regulation 25 of those regulations. The next question repeats, how can the EIA consent be discharged when the environmental statement failed to include a non-technical summary? And how can a self-contradictory consent exist in law? As set out in the report, these details are considered to be a subsequent application, sorry, a subsequent application even in accordance with the EIA regulations. And as were the details that were approved in relation to the condition in relation to the South Street access and when that condition was considered. As you will see from that officer's report, the impacts in relation to the environmental impact assessment regulations was considered as, in relation to that application, it was considered to be a subsequent application. But as there were considered to be no further environmental impacts, that was considered to be acceptable. The next question is in relation to, when the application was accepted, was it validated as being EIA development? And no, it wasn't. It wasn't considered to be EIA development when we accepted the application. And then, as we previously set out, we did do a screening opinion which confirmed that initial assessment that it was an EIA development. And then there's a second part of that question in relation to appropriate assessments. An appropriate assessment is not required for this particular scheme. That is because there is no increase in population as part of the bridge scheme itself. And as a result, we do not consider there to be an impact on special protection area for which no appropriate assessment is required. The next question is in relation to air quality, rivers and flood risk. And how can the EIA screening document conclude that there would be no additional impacts, particularly in relation to the extended site area? Whilst the site area is bigger, the development as a whole, so the project, the environmental impact assessment project would not have significant environmental impacts above what has previously been considered. As such, officers considered that this consent, if approved, would be lawful. The next question in relation to flood risk. And in particular, you ask, what is the one in a hundred plus climate change flood level? And if it is within the flood risk assessment? The Environment Agency have assessed the information that has been submitted with the application and they are satisfied that the proposal is acceptable in relation to flood risk. And the one in a hundred plus climate change flood level is 64 metres. Next question is in relation to the chambers that house the flood risk compensation within the bridge itself. And again, these would be the same capacity as has previously been approved on the single lane bridge. And furthermore, the Environment Agency have assessed all the flood risk implications of the proposal and they are satisfied that the flood risk compensation is acceptable. If you ask if a new flood risk assessment is required prior to the consent, no. We consider that the flood risk information, as do the Environment Agency, has been submitted as acceptable and is adequate for our purposes in concluding that the proposal would be acceptable in terms of flood risk. The next question is about the in combination effects in terms of flood risk. And as I set out before, the in combination effects were assessed as part of the 2012 permission and the environmental statement, which was submitted with that permission. And this proposal is considered to be no more harmful than that previous scheme. The next question is in relation to land levels at the Dogford Car Park access. And you ask if, how can we assess the in combination effects if we don't know the levels of that area and if the Environment Agency are aware of the situation? The levels for that particular area aren't relevant for this particular application. Officers are satisfied that there is an implementable consent in relation to the main East Street development. And this, the flood risk implications on that consent were adequately mitigated as part of that consent itself. Again, for this scheme, it has been considered independently and in combination as part of the 2012 permission. And this proposal is no more harmful than what has already been approved and found to be acceptable. The next question is in relation to the regularisation of the consent. Apologies, bear with me a minute. This is in relation to the implementation of the consent. We, officers are satisfied that the proposal has been implemented. And I understand that those of you who attended the site visit were shown where the trenches were dug from the, well, on the land to implement the consent itself. And the final questions are in relation to the conditions. The first is in relation to condition one, which you stated omitted a drawing. This condition has been amended as per the update sheet, as Ruth explained earlier. The next question is in relation to conditions 10 and 11, which are contradictory regarding the working hours. So condition 10, that has been actually amended as part of the update sheet and that relates to the construction access itself. However, oh, sorry, the full details need to be submitted and approved for that. But the construction hours submitted as part of that condition would be related to the construction hours itself. Whereas the, whereas condition 11 relates to lane closures along the A31. So they can be separate and we do not consider that separate hours would be contradictory. In relation to 14, Part H, you ask if this needs to be approved by Surrey Wildlife Trust. This particular part of that condition was requested by the Environment Agency and therefore we would require their approval upon submission to approve the details reserved by that condition. The next question is relating to a surface drainage plan and would that be subject to the Lead Local Flood Authority approval? For this particular application, the Lead Local Flood Authority are not a statutory consultant. The Lead Local Flood Authority are a statutory consultant for major developments only. So they would not be a consultant upon the discharge of that particular condition. The next question is in relation to condition nine and whether that duplicates condition three. Condition three requires the removal of the vehicular bridge after the construction itself, which officers consider is absolutely reasonable and entirely necessary. And without that condition, the council would lose control over the removal of that bridge itself. Obviously, it has been designed only to be a temporary access and it is not something that officers consider would be visually acceptable in the long term or for accessing the site itself. And then finally, condition nine has a statement in it regarding costs and expenses. This condition in particular was requested by the County Highway Authority and the sentence in it regarding costs and expenses is really a reminder for the applicants that they would be expected to meet the costs and expenses of that work itself. Thank you, Chairman, and councillor Hyman, I hope that clearly answers all of your questions.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Townsend?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to ask something about the presentation earlier, if that's okay. Could we go back to the slide that has got the comparison of the two bridges, the single and the double bridge, please? Thank you. I just want to, for clarification purposes, the actual red line boundary around the two-way bridge plan, does the construction go outside the red line boundary of the two-way bridge, please?
No, so the, the, the bridge that requires planning permission and the South Street access and the compound are all within the red line plan, within the red line of the site.
So the road that's coming out of the two-way bridge plan, that's not part of this planning permission to construct that particular road?
No, I mean, effectively, that is part of the East Street redevelopment site. So that will be the construction, that, the site will be under construction once the bridge is completed. So that is integrated with the East Street redevelopment construction site.
Okay, thank you. Just another short thing. I did ask about the Lead Local Flood Authority question with you and I understand that the site's only 0.97 hectares and would need to be over one hectare in order to be looked at by the Lead Local Flood Authority. And I did request earlier whether or not it would be possible to have a verification condition at all on the Suds so that, you know, there can be a surety that they have been constructed in accordance with the flood risk assessment, which may give some, perhaps-
I get the officers to come back in a moment. Louise?
Yeah, what we can do is we can add into the condition a request for a verification report from the applicants once that work has been carried out.
That's great. And one tiny little thing from the Environment Agency report. I did notice that they asked that there be no permanent lighting on the footbridge. And I wondered if this would be a pertinent time to add that as a condition or if it's something else that will be done at a later stage? Thank you.
So I think under the terms of condition 14, which has an awful lot of, encompasses an awful lot of things, details of a lighting scheme would need to be submitted as part of the method statement and construction environmental management plan. And we would, that, a majority of those requirements in that condition come from the Environment Agency, so we would be consulting them on that document. And so at that point, they can ensure that it satisfies them in terms of their assessment for the impact on the riverway. And we also have on record on the application, and the applicant has seen it, that specific requirement from the EA. So condition 14, because they have submitted lighting strategy and because we would consult the EA on that, should encapsulate that.
Thank you. Councillor Follows?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you Louise for going through all of those questions. I'm sure councillor Hyman will have some responses, but equally, thank you for going through them. I was just, something that was bothering me both this week and the two weeks ago when we were discussing the bats. A number of the things that you referred to in your answers referred to items where either Waverley officers or Surrey County Council officers had given an expert opinion on a matter. Could you just explain to me how all of these groups mitigate the potential conflict of interest by being effectively partnered with the developer? How are we allowed to take these things as independent if we're in fact the developer?
Chairman, if I could answer that. I hope it's been apparent from the inception of this scheme, it goes back a long time, but that the interests of the council as landowner and the interests of the council as local planning authority have been kept very separate in the most appropriate way. That the planning judgements are independent, they're carried out properly and the assessments are in planning terms and the advice that's always given to the planning committee are purely, appropriately reflecting the requirements of policy and guidance. And the decisions that are being made are, and the advice given to members are from the planning team as opposed to others within the- the planning team, as opposed to others within the council that have been connected with the landowner's side. So there is a very clear, we refer to it as the Chinese wall, but you can have every confidence, as in any site where the council has an interest as landowner, that the two are kept separate quite appropriately. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Mulliner.
Thank you, Chairman. Given the diligent detail that councillor Hyman's gone to, I think we've had every aspect of this gone over. My question is simply this, has anything been revealed by these questions or tonight which casts any doubt on the opinion, which I believe has been expressed by the officers, that there is no legal barrier to us granting permission for this if we so choose?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the question, councillor Mulliner. Louise, Ruth, myself and Elizabeth spent several hours going over the questions that councillor Hyman submitted this morning. We can reassure members that we are 100% confident that members tonight are capable of, of taking a decision to grant permission. That's in terms of agreeing with the officers' conclusion that the scheme will not have significant impacts on the environment, significant impacts on the SPA. As Louise has said quite clearly, we have gone through a screening process and the information that's informed that has satisfied us that there won't be significant effects on, on the environment. And I, I hope that members can rely on the diligent report that Ruth has prepared. So, but I can reassure members that we don't have any concerns in, in regards to the lawfulness of, of your decision tonight. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you very much indeed. Can we move on? Councillor Hyman, is that a question? Further question?
Well, thank you, Chairman, because most of the actual questions asked here, I didn't really get a clear answer to. One or two I did and I thank the officers for that, but it's, I'd like to revisit a couple of issues, particularly to, so that members can be aware of what's going on at the moment.
Point of order, Chairman. The reason why I asked the question that I did was to clarify for my sake and that of my colleagues whether or not the issue of legality is present or not. I would much rather that we proceeded to the debate, having had the questions and the answers.
Thank you, indeed. Councillor Coburn, did you want to come in now or to start the debate?
I don't have a quest. Well, I'd like to start the debate, but, you know, you're the chairman, sir.
Yeah. Fine. We will move on to the debate at this point. Who wishes to start? Councillor Coburn.
Thank you. Yes, I, I am completely conflicted on this one, as I think officers realised on the site visit. It says very clearly in the report that Farnham Town Council has no objection, but I am sure if you look back at 2012, Farnham Town Council did raise the issue of the suitability of Borelli Walk as a hall road. I'd be very, very surprised if it weren't in there then, so. It's very difficult always to understand how other people see your town. Those of us who've worked very hard for a long time on our individual communities have a special relationship with areas that people coming into the town can't possibly share and it applies across the borough. Obviously, my relationship, as it were, is with Farnham, which is why I spearheaded the design statement, the Farnham Conservation Area Management Plan, and I'm now doing the partial review of the neighbourhood plan. I don't get paid for any of this, I do it out of love, and it is love, for the town. In the same way, I'm quite convinced councillor Townsend does the same for, for Cranley and, you know, councillor Mulliner for Hazemere. When this came forward and I saw that the, as a result of the discharge of a condition, the establishment of the hall road along Borelli Way was established, my heart did sink. I would never vote against something that has been legally decided by officers. I'm not going to vote against it tonight, nor can I vote for it. I couldn't sleep in my bed if I actually gave permission for a hall road for this bridge. No problem with a two-lane bridge at all. In fact, wonder why it wasn't done before. But even at this late stage, I would beg you to start, to look again at this construction. When we all wanted the bridge, I think all of us imagined it would be built from the site. I don't think any of us imagined we'd go down Borelli Walk. Why is Borelli Walk so special? Well, it says on the Waverley's own website that it's one of the most attractive walks in the Farnham area. Won't go into all the detail of Charles Borelli, those of us who live in the town know it all, all about it. Councillor Potts raised the issue of the commemorative benches, which must be treated with respect, but there's also a whole host of ornamental trees, many of which were donated by members of the public. Borelli Walk was given in, well, was opened in 53 and it's loved. There was a, a comment about residential amenity, that none would be affected. When we did the site visit, we sat or walked along that road or path and we saw lady on a mobility scooter, a bike, a couple of people sitting down. An opposite Home Park House, we saw a young family sitting there by the river bench and we, riverbank, and we also saw all the people of Home Park with their windows open enjoying the summer. I'm sorry, I cannot, I cannot believe that this is acceptable. I really can't. Not the double-lane bridge, no problem with that, not the East Street development, you know, I'm not trying to stop anything. But to think that you can come down Borelli Walk, yes, you can replant trees, but if somebody's donated the tree in memory of somebody, a special person, and we're going to hack it up to bring a couple of lorries down there, I just think it's something I cannot support. I didn't give permission for the hall road. I'm almost certain as a town council, we objected to it in the previous application, but I, I don't know that. And I'm afraid I just cannot support the use of that, that role. I've said before, I will never, in this chamber, vote against a legitimate decision made by officers, but I also, in this case, cannot support it. I really can't understand why it's necessary and I really think it's the wrong decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mulliner.
Thank you, Chairman, I'll be fairly brief. I do understand councillor Coburn's concerns about Borelli Walk. It was the fir-, when I went on the site visit, it was the first time I had been down it, as far as I can remember. All I would say is we did check quite carefully, the trees along it were going to be preserved by the route to be followed by the hall road, as she terms it, and indeed, the two limes at the entrance from South Street were going to be preserved. And I think the other thing to say is that the construction is fortunately a temporary process and things can be put back. And the greater good of getting a development which Farnham badly needs is, I think, an overriding consideration. But to go back to the main issue, it seems to me that having established that there is no legal objection to doing this, two things stand very obviously in favour of supporting the officer's recommendation. The first is that on the facts, a two-lane bridge will reduce congestion on the A31 and indeed, reduce damage to air quality. That seems to me decisive. Secondly, which has been said and needs to be repeated, there is an extent permission and it would be totally illogical to actually vote to prefer to have that implemented rather than the one now, now proposed. So I have no doubt at all in supporting the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the introductions at the very beginning of this evening, if we can all remember back that far, was emphasising that access from the A31 and not through the town centre was a prime requirement in our consultations when we decided on this bridge. I was a member of the committee and I certainly voted in favour of the bridge at the previous meeting. However, I am upset and extremely disappointed that condition fifteen, which was quite important, so important, I think, that it, that any changes of it should have been brought back to committee, as what it effectively did was to allow construction traffic to go through the town centre, which was the whole, construction traffic for the bridge, to go through the town centre. And the whole point of building the bridge was to avoid traffic going through the town centre, so it, it, to me, is a contradiction at best. I must pick up something that the portfolio holder said, or the leader said, whichever hat, that many people in Farnham want this. If that is germane to the, to the debate, I have to inform them that many people in Farnham do not want it and if that is going to be in any way a deciding factor, please consider it. Councillor Coburn spoke eloquently about Borelli Walk. She is, as you know, the current leader of Farnham Town Council. For those of you who don't know, for many years before that, I was also the leader of Farnham Town Council and she is absolutely right in everything she says. The whole point of this bridge was to avoid destruction of Borelli Walk. The hall road is an appalling idea, it should not be considered and I would beg councillors to throw this out.
Thank you. Councillor Follos.
Thank you, Chairman. I try to come to these, learning about some of the other parts of the borough while I'm trying to vote on matters that concern them. And I have to say, I am moved by councillor Coburn and councillor Ward's points regarding Borelli Walk. Could the officers just comment as to whether there would be destruction of trees that had been, that had been planted in that way? Can also the officers comment as to whether there are any alternatives to this particular choice of use of the road? And yes, that's all for me, thank you.
Thank you. I'll let the officers come back to you on that. Ruth.
Thank you, Chair. So in terms of trees that are being removed, one cedar tree would be removed to make way for the turning area into the site. There would be a number of trees that would be pruned, but only one tree would be removed and our, our boreocultural officer has raised no objection to the tree works that have been proposed.
Thank you. Councillor James.
Thank you, Chairman. I listened to my colleagues, slightly emotional, which I understand, on Borelli Walk and the trees that might have been planted in memory, but I will be supporting the officers because the important thing is the bridge and the access to the site, so it doesn't go through Farnham Town Centre. And it's now, in my view, it's a question of whether it's a single one that has permission or a dual one. And the dual one is, obviously, has advantages for the residents of Farnham, because the site will be, I, I'm not a construction engineer, but I imagine that East Street would be can built slightly quicker if the construction vehicles can double up and go in and out in a quicker way. But the trees, I, I just remind people who might use the A3, I was involved with the lip hook bypass, and we had people actually camped in the trees because they were planted in memory of Canadians, all the maple trees down the A3. And I think now, many, many years later, I don't believe anyone in this chamber would actually think that it had ruined the memory of the Canadians who died and the trees were planted, because the maple trees that were planted, the new ones in replace of those, I think are absolutely beautiful and nobody has made any complaints ever since. So I'm, I'm sure that any trees that might get disturbed or what will be replaced and in years to come, the benefits will outweigh those few little mishaps, I'm afraid. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Follos, I cut you off.
I'm sure Louise will get to it, just the other half my question.
Okay, Louise.
Apologies for missing out the second half of your, of your question. Unfortunately, there isn't an alternative. When you build a bridge, you do need to build the bridge from both sides of the embankment, so you do need to have access on both the south and the north side. And I'd just like to take the opportunity to remind members again that this access has already been agreed and there is a fallback position and that is highly material to your decision this evening. Thank you.
Councillor Byrne.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I think I said to you actually, on the site visit, very often, because we have visited this site over the years so many times, was it worthwhile going? I thought perhaps I knew what was going on. And I, like councillor Coburn, was horrified to see that Borelli Walk was being proposed to be used. But I understand the statements, and councillor James has just said it, they have permission for that. I'm not happy with the way that decision was done under delegated powers, but that's what has happened. It is there for the single bridge and therefore, and it equally applies to any work that we would do by passing this application for a dual bridge. And therefore, I support the officers. But I was concerned and very, very surprised when I heard that. Perhaps I should have read up something a bit beforehand, but it was a dramatic surprise to me to, to see that that Borelli Walk, which I agree is a beautiful walk, and it's going to be desecrated for a period, hopefully it will be rejuvenated and replaced in, in such a way that in, in a couple of years' time, it will look exactly as it does today or even better.
Councillor Hyman.
Thank you, Chairman. If I can refer members to the top of page 54 of their officer report. I've asked a number of questions about EIA. Of course, this is EIA development, we know it is, it is a subsequent application because, because it is, by definition. I would very much like to pursue councillor Mulliner's question in respect of whether there are any legal barriers, because I think that, and I do understand that we might have to go into exempt session, but I would certainly like members to be aware of the definitions of Regulation Two and the, the terms of Regulation Three, which constrain our decision tonight, and content of EIA, which is in Regulation 18 particularly. But there are some, some important things. Page 54 tells us we've got to consider the in combination impacts, even if we're trying to say it's not EIA development, and of, of course, it is a subsequent, subsequent application to EIA development. We do have to consider that and I have raised issues which haven't been answered in respect of flood compensation in combination with the East Street schemes. The Environment Agency are aware that there is a ramp to be built for the, for the entrance to the car park and we do not have sufficient flood compensation. I can explain this probably, but we certainly don't. If you, if you wouldn't mind for a start, putting up the comparative, comparative picture, which is the elevation, the side view, let's say, of the, that's it, thank you. You can see, I hope members can see better than I can, where the pedestrian underpass, it's got two people in it, it's been moved now, but in the original one at the top, there is a large, long box to the left which was going to contain a lot of storm cell, parabolic storm cell tunnels to let floodwater through and to create flood compensation by digging them down 23 centimetres into the ground, roughly. And to the right-hand side, there was a, of the, of the pedestrian underpassing, see there is also one single, much longer, because of course, it's, sorry, it's, it's wide at that point, the embankment will be very wide because it's up near the bypass where you go in and out. It would be 34 metres long, I think it is, that one to the right of the tunnel, and that's why the tunnel's been moved, because moving it nearer to the bridge makes it, makes it a lot shorter and cheaper. But that long box, they were going to fit eight of average length, 22 metres in. Now, you can see from the bottom picture there that the, the bridge is slightly longer, the moving of the tunnel, and obviously the, the long widths that would be required of storm tech chambers if they were over near the bypass. The, the size of the, that they've got there, you can now only put six in, so instead of the nine, originally there are only six, so there's a lot less compensation now than there was offered before.
Let, let me interrupt. I'm sure that the two officers in front of me have already answered that question quite clearly and said that the volume is the correct number. Ruth, could I ask?
Thank you, Chair. We've been advised by the applicants that the same number of cells that were proposed on the single-lane bridge will be provided with the two-lane bridge. And what I would just like to reiterate is that the Environment Agency have looked at all this in an awful lot of detail and we did speak to them on Monday. They have confirmed they're happy with it from a flood risk perspective. Um, they have confirmed they're happy with it from a flood risk perspective, and they have suggested a condition which is attached to the report, to say that the development should be carried out in accordance with provisions in the flood risk assessment, suggesting that they have confidence in that flood risk assessment.
Thank you, Ruth. Can I move?
Chairman, are we allowed to, to, to go into these? Because, I mean, we've, we've got the other issue where, um, you know, I quoted in respect of the requirement for in combination, uh, traffic impact assessment of it, and I quoted Chris Nicholson's response to our air quality officer, where they said, "We don't need to, um, carry out in combination impacts, because they won't be in place at the same time. We know that they will be in place at the same time. We know that they haven't, and they told us they weren't going to, and they haven't conducted in combination assessment of the traffic impacts. We know that for a fact."
We, we are dealing with this.
And we're being told the opposite here, and we know it.
Councillor, we are dealing with this application, not another one. And I think Surrey Highways have already answered your question.
No, no, Chairman, and the in combination impacts of this with other developments does mean that we have to look at other developments, doesn't it? And it is actually the same EIA development we're looking at. I'm not saying, you know, in combination with hotfields or whatever. But, uh, we know that these, that these, uh, in combination impacts assessments have not been conducted.
Chairman, on a point of order, I did not think it was correct for a councillor to make the same point time and time again in different guises.
I, I am coming to that very point. Councillor? Thank you very much indeed. You've had all those questions answered. I think, uh, I come back to, uh, Mike, if you, did you want to come back in on the highways issue?
Chairman, all I wanted to, to remind members was, was tonight, all we can consider is whether or not there are disbenefits in allowing this two-way width bridge compared with what is already extant, what has been implemented. We've already heard that, and as, as councillor Mulliner said, if this one is refused, to use that oft-quoted term, we will be cut off our nose to spite our face. We end up then implementing a single carriageway bridge that, as has been set out in the TA, following further more detailed assessment, would not provide as greater relief to traffic congestion as will the now proposed two-way bridge. That is the bottom line of what members have to, to decide tonight, and that is why we are very much supporting this two-way bridge. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Moving on to councillor Goodrich.
Chairman, I'll be brief. We're a planning committee, we're dealing with a planning application, we're dealing with this particular planning application, not anything historical. I think we've had a very full report, and I thank the officers for it, and I think we've had very full answers to questions, and I thank the officers for that. We as members of a planning committee have to rely on officers' advice, because none of us are experts in everything, uh, highways and, and environmental matters and so on. Uh, and we have had very full advice from Waverley officers, as well as officers from elsewhere, Surrey County Council and so on. We cannot put the black, the, the, the clock back. I was on the planning committee when we had overwhelming support, a- and it was a red line, as has been mentioned previously, that we must have a bridge, um, for the development of East Street, and that, that, there was universal help for that. The, the, the issue is simple. Do we refuse this application? And if so, for what planning reasons? And if we do refuse it, the simple answer is they'll then build a single bridge with the access way to build the bridge the same as now, uh, as being proposed, and the only difference is that it's double bridge. If we pass the application, then we get all the advantages that we've heard already. And it seems to me a no-brainer, um, bearing in mind where we are. I'm sympathetic with members of Farnham who would have hoped that Barelli Walk, uh, would not be used, but the fact of the matter is, we are where we are, a- and in that basis, I, I feel that we, uh, must pass this application. I am very much in favour of it, because I can see the advantages of a double bridge as distinct from a single bridge. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Follet.
Um, thank you, Chairman. Um, I think councillor Goodrich summed that up perfectly. There's a danger that members on occasion can become experts, and when not, we have to listen to the experts that's in front of us. Um, of course, a scheme of this size will have, um, its casualties, and that's deeply sad, and it's deeply regrettable. And I do have great sympathy and empathy with, um, Farnham residents who feel there's some injustice in using this beautiful walkway. However, we have to move on. I mean, I can remember going on the site visit many, many years ago, and, um, the regrets here, I think, is, one, it was done under delegated powers, and people probably feel that that wasn't the right way to do it. And secondly, why a two-way bridge was never even considered in the first place is beyond me. Um, this has been going on there for so long, I don't think, the alternatives are not an equivalent to what is be, here before us. So here, what we have before us here is a solution to get the scheme moving, get it operational, and have many benefits to go with it. So whilst I have sympathy and a great deal of empathy, we have to remind ourselves, the principle has been approved, and I'm satisfied that the information that I've had from officers this evening enables me to make the right decision to support the officers' recommendation. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Huntler.
I'd like to agree with councillor Mary, but I'd like to remind members that we've got four minutes to speak, and we need to use that time, otherwise, we're going to be here all night, and I've got to be at work at almost seven tomorrow morning.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Follet, we've got a new point.
No, just thank you very much. I also agree, and thank you very much for the, the comprehensive answers. Um, I, I, this is, I don't think I've been to a planning committee yet since I was elected in December, where there has not been an expressed regret by some member at a planning decision in the past. Um, and it would be nice at some point to be talking about a planning application where we can actually, you know, decide something and not be quite so bound by the past, but looking at this as it is, as they can do almost all the negative things we don't like with an extant permission anyway, and all this does is give us extra space on the bridge in order to build this thing and get it done more efficiently. I personally can't object on any of these grounds, and I've not heard anything that sways me to think otherwise tonight, unlike the bats last week.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hymn, new points or not?
Uh, the question under G in respect of, um, the extant consent, Chairman, um, because I've heard a number of people saying that there's nothing we can do about the, um, the use of Barelli Walk like this, we can't change it. Um, that's not necessarily true. I mean, firstly, it is being assumed that there is an extant consent that can be used, and I did ask and address this. Um, the supposedly extant consent was granted, contrary to, to condition 23 of the, um, original 2010 and 2012 consents. Um, that was, uh, condition 23 limits lane closure to nine to five, and that was in order to avoid conducting in combination assessment of traffic impacts. Um, now, because the, uh, method of construction statement, which was done under delegated powers when the use of Barelli Walk, uh, as a haul route was put through, um, that was in the summer of 2015, uh, we are, uh, we're, we're now in a position where, that created the position, where they consented 24-hour use, uh, a 24-hour closure of bypass lane, whereas, um, condition 23, uh, is the opposite to it. Now, my understanding is that you can't have a self-contradictory consent, and that's why I asked the question. You know, I think that we can change this. I think that Chris Nicholson actually don't necessarily have that, um, uh, consent that they can revert to. So if we want to improve things and, and sort out councillor Ward and councillor Coburn's, um, very deep concerns, which I absolutely share, but I'm looking at pragmatically, how do we ma- make this right? Because we don't have to have that haul route in place. Um, I'm absolutely sure of it. It's certainly not in the form that it is. Um, so, so I asked, um, as the assumed consent has not been regularised, condition 23 has not been varied or removed, so to, to allow the 24-hour workings, which, uh, you know, we have got a, a, a self-contradictory consent that is supposedly extant, and that's why I asked, how can that exist in law? So I'd like it clarified, please, whether, how we can have that self-contradictory consent, how we, how, how does it exist? And, and what has to be done about it? Because certainly if they want to use that, they'll have to come back with a variation of condition application and need more assessments, Chairman.
Thank you. I think, uh, you've already had the answer from Louise Jendal. Um, we have an extant permission, and I will ask Louise just to repeat that.
So condition 10 is in relation to the, um, working method statement to control the environmental effects of the development, which has been repeated on the proposal, I think it is condition 14. Um, and condition 23 restricts the hours of closure on the A31 Farnham bypass, um, which shall not be implemented or take place before the hours of nine AM or after five PM. And we are satisfied that neither of those conditions conflict with, with each other. And on this consent, um, if approved, we will ensure that when the details come into discharge, condition 14, um, that it doesn't conflict with either condition 23 or any of the other conditions, um, attached to the consent itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Do you have the answer, councillor? I think that was quite clear to us all.
No, I think it didn't address the question. The, the condition 23 contradicts what was put through by discharge of condition in, in, uh, 2015, in July 2015. Uh, because what was agreed was, in, in discharge of conditions 10 and 15 of O911, it was agreed that they could have 24-hour, um, a closure of a lane of the bypass during that part of the construction process. So it conflicts with that condition 23. So that's what I'm saying, it's, it's nothing to do with the current conditions. Although, this trick is being used again, we do have condition 11 in front of us, where the crest, uh, uh, you know, we're being told it'll be nine till five. Well, actually, that conflicts with what it says in the method of construction statement, which quite, quite clearly says that, um, their deliveries and site hours would be eight till six, not nine till five.
Chairman, could I ask a very key question? An extant permission is one which is available to be implemented. Until they start implementing, you cannot tell whether or not the conditions are being com- complied with. So you cannot use this sort of argument to say the permission itself is invalid. I'm a retired lawyer, but that certainly makes sense, sense to me. And if this is so, councillor Hyman's point has no merit at all. We can, Chris Nicholson, implement the existing permission, yes or no? If they can, we have an extant permission, and therefore the arguments about not wishing to go back to an inferior position make perfect sense. But perhaps the lawyer here, um, Lewis, can comment on that.
Lewis, and then I'd ask head of planning.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, there are circumstances where implementation, lawful implementation can't occur if certain pre-commencement conditions haven't first been complied with. Um, there is case law on this subject, and it's, it's, it's not straightforward. Um, the, the case law coined the, the term, uh, a condition precedent, which is essentially a pre-commencement condition which, um, goes to the heart of the permission, and which expressly forbears, um, implementation, um, until it's been complied with. So, um, it's an issue where you have to look at it, look at it on a case-by-case basis. Um, I haven't had a chance to do that with this particular condition, so I can't comment. Um, but in principle, um, what I'm saying is that there may be a situation where if, if, if a, if a condition precedent hasn't been complied with, implementation can't take place, um, in theory.
Do we have any such condition precedents?
I would need to look more carefully at the condition, but Louise, I can defer to.
Yeah, we are satisfied, oh, sorry. Sorry. Um, yeah, we, there was some pre-commencement conditions that were attached to that consent, um, but all those pre-commencement conditions were discharged prior to the implementation of the scheme, so we are satisfied that there are no outstanding conditions precedents that haven't been discharged.
Elizabeth, do you want to sum up before we move to the recommendation?
Well, only that, Chairman, the point I was going to make was covered by colleagues, so, um, a- as has been said, we're, we're confident that the, the previous permission has been implemented, and it is extant in perpetuity. Um, I've nothing further to add, Chairman. I hope it's been helpful. We have tried to answer all your questions that were raised on the site visit, and indeed councillor Hyman's, uh, questions, uh, in writing, uh, but we do come to the same conclusion that we do think you have an application here, which for the reasons that we set out, um, should be supported. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Members, I'll move to the recommendation. Recommendation revised as on the amendment sheet, that subject to the consideration of any further representation and consultancy responses received by the 6th of July 2018, that raise further material planning matters that have not already been considered, permission be granted, subject to amended conditions 1, 5, 6, 7, 10, 14, 18, and informative 2, and conditions 2, 3, and 4, as amended, uh, we talked earlier on, uh, to refer to planting, not planning, um, 8, 9, 11, 12, 13, 15, 16, 17, and informative 1 in the agenda report, that permission be granted. Those in, sorry, I've missed something?
Um, I think councillor Townsend, um, suggested an additional, additional condition in relation to a verification report in relation to surface water drainage.
Sorry? Have you got the wording for that, please, Louise?
I suggest, um, a slight wording to number condition 14 and an additional condition. Um, so in relation to condition 14, um, and that is part T of the condition, which currently reads details of surface water runoff, I would suggest that is amended to read details of surface water runoff and details of works to control the rate of discharge from the access road. Um, so that is, is for condition 14, and that is what is required to be submitted prior to the works taking place themselves. Um, and then, in addition to that, I would suggest an additional condition, number 19, um, and that should read, "Following the completion of a surface water drainage scheme as required by condition 14T, a verification report shall be submitted to and approved by the local planning authority, confirming that the surface water drainage scheme has been, has been completed in accordance with the approved details."
I think councillor Townsend is happy with that amendment.
Agreed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That completes it.
We can take a separate, um, vote on that, although I think people...
I think, members, you've heard the recommendations. If there's no further comment on those amendments, can I have those in favour of granting permission? Please, Chair.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and informative 1 in the agenda report, that permission be granted.
Those against?
One.
Abstentions?
One.
Thank you. That is granted. Thank you very much indeed. That concludes our meeting. Just one comment, we have 14, uh, planning applications to hear before the end of August on JPC, so there will be more than one per night, when we can fit them in. But, uh, that is to be decided exactly when, uh, we're going to fit them in. But there are a number of, uh, um, outlined applications, but there are a number of others that we've already seen in outline, so, uh, we'll see how it all goes. But, uh, we will get the plan out here as soon as possible. Thank you all.